I'll call this meeting the Board of Education to order. This is a special meeting for the interview of individuals who have applied for the open position on the board vacated by Ross Harris. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes per agenda? Or are there additions?
Well, in the event that there's a need for discussion about individual candidates, we may have a need to go into closed session after the interviews.
Which is not on the agenda at this point. Can you hear us?
Yes.
We're in good shape for the shape we're in then. Okay, our first interview is Nicholas. May we call you Nico?
Yeah.
Please.
I prefer Mr. Aguirre, but yeah, Nico.
Okay, well, alrighty then. Mr. Aguirre.
No, because it's harder than that. Yes, Nico is hard.
And if you would use the microphone, that would be the one.
Can you hear me?
We can. And I'm going to ask the questions and the other board members are going to listen, take notes, et cetera. Okay? So let's start by having you tell us about yourself and experience or associations you've had with children in schools.
Well, I'm fairly un-messed up, so some might say I'm still a child, so there's some close relativity there. But my name is Nico Escudero, I go by Nico, that's a lot easier for most people. Home is Nebraska, I was born and raised in Nebraska. So some of the other things that are more relative to, I feel my relativity and possible assistance with the board, I'll discuss a little bit later on. But essentially, I graduated from the University of Nebraska, worked at the University of Nebraska for some time, received my master's degree in higher education and student affairs. Made my way through to Marshalltown via JPS, I was transferred out here. I now serve as a human resources director at JPS, largest employer in the county. We have about 2,200 employees or so. I've been here just over two years, two and a half years about, and I've been, I tend to be extremely active within the community since I've been out here. No wife, no children, but I have 10 nieces and nephews of my own, and those are my heart and soul. I have extremely near and dear friends to my heart and their children, call me Theo or call me Uncle, so I also have some other nieces and nephews, so we're not through blood, pretty close kinship there, if you will. I'm a servant leader, is how I describe myself, have a heart for the masses, very difficult for me to say no, so I often sacrifice sleep at the expense or at the benefit, hopefully, of others that lead the masses.
So it's almost like having kids?
Almost. Don't tell them that, because some of them are adults, so. But heard about the opportunity of AEC, I was like, and I was immediately drawn towards it, and here I sit before you.
Why are you interested in serving on the Marshalltown Board of Education?
You know, as stated, my background is in education, so I received my bachelor's in secondary education, so I think that is a nice mesh, if you will. I've worked with Dr. Schuetti a lot in my couple of years here that I've been here. It just makes sense to me. As stated, I try to be a servant leader. Some people are drawn towards that, some people feel that I'm a good leader, but most would agree that I'm a pretty good servant. I don't look at titles or look at hierarchy or class, anything like that. I try to do what I can to be of positive influence on any of those that I happen to touch. So knowing what the mission says, and I love that the school district put in there having that positive mindset. Something very, very difficult to teach, you have to show them, you have to show them that positive mindset, and that's something that I am, I hold very strong in myself in having that positivity, that optimism, gratitude, appreciation, right? And if I'm able to bestow that onto the pupils, the students, I think that's me doing my part. So that's what's led me to my interest in being here.
What qualities would you bring to the board that would make the board more effective in accomplishing the district mission?
You know, we would have to see in time as far as me being able to help you all, potentially us, be more effective. However, what I would say that I bring to the table is maybe a different perspective, a different outlook. I think that knowing what I know about the demographics and the population in the school district, I am of them. I am, my father immigrated to the United States in the mid-'70s, so I'm a first-generation American, most of the students in our school district are. Low-income background, very modest background, first generation to go on to college and pursue and obtain a sort of baccalaureate degree. So me being able to have that relativity, that perspective, that relation to the students, I think that, I don't feel that that's going to hurt in any capacity. Again, knowing that I'm here to serve, difficult for me to say no, I think all of those things would be potentially helpful towards the board, but again, would it be effective, that's for all of us to determine should I be given the opportunity.
What do you think are some of the strengths of the district?
I feel from the outside looking in that the school district does a great job of being proactive, getting out in front of some opportunities for our students. So in particular, when I first came out here and we sponsored the ST Math program, knowing that coding was an opportunity for these young kids and knowing that that is the future of technology, whether we like it or not, that is going to be the future. So giving these youth the opportunity to dip their toes in that and get that experience, something that I never got as a youth, and I'm sure many of you likely, or were likely didn't as well, I think that's a great opportunity. The dual-language program that we have there, nobody can refute the benefits of a dual-language learner, right? And how that manifests itself in different categories and different classes and global thinking and mindset is a great outlook there. I, it's very evident that the school district has great ties within the community, and I'd say that the superintendent is a huge reason because of that. I've never met anybody that is not a there-in-the-band all across the community, and I think that that's extremely beneficial and helpful towards the school district and moving forward and progressing and being the best that we can be. It's something that was new to me when I jumped on board here in Marshalltown with the MBEA, so the business educational lines that we have here within, obviously, the businesses, the educational platforms that we have here. I mean, it's a great exemplification of the opportunities that Marshalltown and the community has taken advantage of, and I really haven't seen that being as successful as it is here versus other communities that I've lived in. So a lot of positive things are going on, and that's just barely true over a little over two short years that I've been here, and I can imagine all the other things that are going on behind those walls and things that I'm just ignorant to because I'm not aware of those.
What are some areas of the district that you would like to see improved today?
Again, that's my ignorance, not having children in the school district, I really can't say where are our areas of opportunities are. Again, being optimistic, being positive, and maybe those are the only things that they're putting in front of me, right? But I see it all optimism, all looking at opportunity in a positive way. I don't know of things that I'm hearing that are an area of opportunity. Something that I am aware of is trying to retain our workforce and our teachers, our staff, but that's everywhere. I gotta look myself in the mirror there, I've got high turnover myself, so I think that's somewhere that every school district, every entity, every 501(c)(3) entity is probably experiencing themselves. So again, it's all on the way you look at it, and I'm very optimistic about the things that are going on in the school district.
Is there anything else you'd like us to know about you that hasn't already been stated?
I guess just to follow up on some of the things that I've been involved in, because of JPS, we have been pretty involved within the school district and some of the things that I'm, that you may or may not be aware of in regards like fundraisers and donation, whether it's the marching band or athletics, or maybe it's me and my staff volunteering with Junior Achievement at Woodbury, or helping out with the Bobcat Ready and pulling on that and making sure all that was in tune and on the right track there, or helping out with the new modular program that's going on at Miller. Very, very good things that I'm hearing about that, helping to sponsor that and push that forward and making sure that that's being taken on and looked at a very positive light by the community, just doing our part there. I have been very involved within trio programs throughout my, since I entered college, so those again being more so targeted towards low-income, first-generation, at-risk youth, if you will, so almost like Junior Achievement would essentially be a precursor to some of those programs, year-ups and ETS, upper bound, SSS, those sorts of things. I just spoke at a commencement at Chauvin Community College for Spring 19 in Omaha, very blessed and fortunate to get that opportunity, worked with the upper bound program for many years as an undergrad and as a graduate student. So I just say that to show again my passion for the youth, that relativity to many students within the demographics that fit that within the school district, and whether or not I'm the one that's selected for this opportunity, I have full faith in your ability to lead us in the right direction, and I'm very grateful to live in this community with such great leadership and proactive type of thing.
Do you have any questions for us?
After you all have the closed session, I might have some questions for you.
Okay. We, after we've interviewed all three candidates, the board will take action and vote on the candidate that we choose, so you're welcome to stick around. You do not need to be present to win.
I guess you said you have a poll question. I know that this is just for the interim basis until the November, is that right? And then is each board member voted on individually, or is it the current board as a whole that gets put on a slate?
Individual. You have a term of office at election of four years, and at the end of those four years, you're up for reelection, or you may choose not to, or...
So that's every...
There will be four board members who will be up for reelection in November, and this seat would be one of those four.
And then two, it's every other year, but the elections are held, and so since it's four this year, it would be three the next time, right? The seven board members?
Each child has four years, do we say that?
Right, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you a minute to gather your thoughts, and if any of you have a question, I'll Mr. Beek? Would you join us at the speaker's table, please? Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. I will do the same as I did for Nico, I will ask the questions and give the board members a chance to take notes, whatever they deem necessary. So tell us about yourself and what experiences and associations you've had with children and schools.
Well, I'm also originally from Nebraska. I grew up there, went to school at Truman State in Missouri. From there, got, lived in Missouri for a while. I, at that point, decided to go back and do my masters, my masters in education administration. After that, I had a kind of a couple of different positions, but all definitely related to education and that area. I've been a college advisor, both at the University of Nebraska and my current position is, is as an academic advisor at Iowa State. I've also been a training coordinator for the Missouri Department of Revenue, a touring coordinator for the athletic department at Iowa State, so had a few different opportunities professionally, but all definitely related to education and really trying to promote professional development, personal development, all those types of things. Personally, I have two children, I have a tan friend, so I've got ties with the school district. Additionally, my wife is also a teacher in the district as well.
Why are you interested in serving on the Marshalltown Board of Education?
I've kind of always, I'm a grown-up, surrounded by educators. My mother taught special ed for 40-plus years, my father worked at the University of Nebraska, also worked at a middle school, in public schools. Like I said, my wife is a teacher, my sister's a college professor. I've, education and public education in particular has been an extremely important value within my family and my upbringing, so that has kind of carried over. And you know, just wanting to be involved, having that great respect for education, education and educators, and in particular, public education. I'm a product of public education, very proud of that, both at the, you know, for K through 12 and in my post-secondary education was through state school. So I really believe that a strong public education is, a public education system is really kind of a backbone of a healthy society. So having said, I want to be a part of that. I've kind of been a part of that in my own little level, and being able to potentially, hopefully, influence those that I interact with on a personal basis, but to be involved in a bit more of a grander scale would be something that I think would be a great opportunity.
What qualities would you bring to the board that would make the board more effective in accomplishing the mission?
So I consider myself a very analytical, logical person, so I think I really excel at sort of taking in information, breaking it down into kind of its component parts, really kind of giving all the necessary information and knowing that I need that from, you know, a wide variety of sources as well, and then kind of being able to really filter through that information and pick out what's important, what's going to be most necessary to make the proper decision, and then really making that good objective decision based off of that information. Yeah, in addition to that, I also think that I have a pretty unique perspective in the fact that I have, having that master's degree in education administration, so I understand that perspective of the administrators. You know, having a spouse who's a teacher, I have that perspective of the teachers in the district. Having children in the district, I have that perspective of the parent, being a community member and a taxpayer and understanding that fiscal responsibility of the position as well. You know, having that very broad understanding of all of the different stakeholders for the district and kind of being able to come at it from each of those, each of those perspectives individually, I think kind of gives me a little bit of a leg up in order to really understand, you know, how our community would be affected and again, all of the stakeholders would be affected by each decision.
What do you think are some of the strengths of the school district?
So I think probably, I mean, the first one that comes to mind is, is the diversity. You know, seeing, having the diversity and I think a lot of, a lot of places would see that as a tremendous challenge, and there definitely are challenges, but I think the district has done a fantastic job of turning those challenges into great opportunities for all students. You know, the, so the EL teacher training that goes on, that sort of transitional courses to help students come in and really be successful, you know, the dual-language programs, I mean, those are all fantastic opportunities for all students. The technology implementation has also been, received, I believe it's been, kind of talking about the ST Math, but also Lexia, kind of going into Canvas, the one-to-one, having students all having that access to technology, if you know, is a great opportunity for the students in the district. And there really are a lot of great things that the district does. Some of the college readiness programming is really good. Like I said, I work at Iowa State and I'm an academic advisor in the science department, so I mean, we work quite a bit with science-bound, so that's a fantastic program. And in the same way with MCC, just those opportunities that are provided for students that might not necessarily have the opportunity to have a college education otherwise, I mean, that's fantastic. I think another thing, again, especially coming from kind of a position in a post-secondary institution where I am, you know, I, there's a lot of, mental health is a huge concern at the college level, and I mean, that begins well before college as well. So I think this focus on kind of social and mental and emotional wellbeing is a huge step in the right direction.
So then let's turn to the areas of weakness or the things that you'd like to see improved in the district.
I think, I mean, some of them are just sort of those universal ones that are ones that every district probably in the country is kind of dealing with. Things like the, two things that I think are probably pretty related, attendance and parental involvement. I mean, I know there have been lots of, there's been movement on trying to address that already, you know, those are definitely continuing issues for the community. Now, as Rico said, teacher retention is always going to be something that in pretty much every district is going to have to deal with. I think, you know, in regards to that, I would say, I think sort of the more tangible parts of what we provide for teachers in the district, it's really great, the pay, the benefits and those sorts of things, it's, you know, it's what can we do kind of outside of that to retain teachers, you know, what kind of support, you know, what, what social factors or whatever it may be, like what, what are those sort of things kind of in-between the lines that we can do to make sure that we're attractive and keep the best possible teachers for our students. And then again, this is probably another one that's dealt with all across the country, but, and we'll always conflict with budgetary things, just aging infrastructure and buildings and things like that. Those are kind of a continuous thing, as soon as you fix one building, you gotta start working on the next sort of thing. So I mean, it's again, a continuous process, but you know, it's definitely something we're, and we just want to make sure it doesn't get overlooked in the shuffle of other issues.
What would you like us to know about you that you may not have already stated?
I think probably the main one is again, coming from a position at Iowa State where I see the incoming students and kind of see both the good and bad of sort of the idea of college readiness. I think, I think that could be very useful for the board, you know, having that direct contact with students and knowing kind of what, what sort of the potential deficiencies are when students are coming into college, you know, what's kind of preventing them from being successful once they get there, and you know, what are the other things that we can be working on ahead of time to maybe help them be more successful after they leave? I think kind of in addition to that, and a lot of my positions are... I think kind of in addition to that, and a lot of my positions have dealt a lot with professional development alongside of kind of education in terms of like technical skills. And, you know, I've always seen that as something that's extremely important. And that's something that I've actually taught courses at Iowa State in basically job readiness. So, you know, for kind of like juniors and seniors, like getting prepared, like having them make a resume, have them do a cover, those sorts of things. And it's pretty amazing how much just a quick little seminar type of course can be appreciated by those students because they haven't had the opportunity to learn those types of things. So I mean, even, you know, even though that's at the college level, you know, that's something that can be learned for students. Coming out of high school as well. And just being able to promote that professional and personal growth just in general. You know, sort of, kind of sounds cheesy, but you know, but sort of like the idea of never stop learning. Like that, you know, just because you get your high school degree, that doesn't mean you're done growing as a person and even as a student, that knowledge is, you know, something to be striving for. Yeah, and then probably just one last thing too is I'm a huge proponent of sort of extracurricular activities as well. So I know that's another thing that, especially when it comes to budget time, can be potentially a sort of a divisive issue. And again, I'm somebody who I feel very benefited from being involved in athletics, fine arts, you know, all of those different opportunities that are provided through sort of things outside of the classroom. So I'm always going to be a strong proponent of providing those for our students.
Well, you heard me tell Nico what our plan is. So as I told him, you're welcome to stay or we'll contact you on Friday.
What did you see?
Wind. Not the hail yet.
At one hail, I just want water.
You're getting it right now.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a warning. Until 5:45.
Until when?
5:45. Yep. Could have damaging hail and winds up to six miles an hour. That's why the phones were going off and stuff.
Yay!
Yeah.
Well, John, probably about the middle of your interview will all be sent to the basement. Ready to roll?
Yes ma'am.
Come join us, John. Yeah, we'll keep you in the dark.
Well, those flashes.
Yeah. I will do the same with you as I've done with the first two candidates. I will ask the questions and the board will respond right away. So let's start with having you tell us about yourself and what experiences and associations you've had with children in schools.
Okay, as you know, my name is John Johnson. I grew up in Chicago.
Not Nebraska?
Chicago proper, not one of those little suburbs that people tend to refer to as Chicago. I'm a graduate of Langtown High School, which is a Chicago public school. I was brought up in the public school system. Still remember my second teacher's, second grade teacher's name, this is Alabia. She was Greek and she was the one who changed the world for me. Really made me want to read everything else. Starting on the honor roll of her class just continues out through high school. I have two children currently at M H S High School and a sophomore and a junior now technically starting the school year. I have a grandson who will be going into second grade over at Rogers Elementary School. And my wife is a teacher of the district. My experience with youth, go back when I was 26 years old in Chicago, I started a youth group on the west side of Chicago. And I have been doing youth groups ever since, I won't tell you how many years because it depends on how old I am, but for many, many years. And I do youth groups here. So about three years ago, I was approached by a pastor to start a youth group. And currently, we have just heard from the head of the church, Methodist church, no, I'm not Methodist, that we are the largest youth group for unreachable kids who have no church affiliation anywhere. And this takes place in Gilman, which is a very small town. So I was kind of shocked to think that one or something would be larger. My affiliation with Marshalltown Schools is I'm a past board member, I served before here term. I read over at Rogers to the first and second grade class. I'm still currently doing that for the first grade class, so it has been, wow, my children are sophomores and junior, and I've been doing it since then. I also used to run the school store when it was a physical store over at Lenahan. So when it first started, I did that for three years. It is now a computerized store where the kids get to turn in their report tickets via the computer. I attend the field trips with at Raptors for my grandson, if I had the time to do so. I am involved with the high school pretty much just with my kids individually. They are in activities over there, so I support them and I will tell all of their little functions. I did step up, Jackie needed somebody to step up and help at one of the basketball games, so I came back.
Why are you interested in serving on the Marshalltown School Board?
Because serving my community is pretty much one of the things that I do. I am, I feel that the best way to serve a community is through the school board because it affects every single family in the community. I feel that education is the key. Why people move to the places they move besides their job, education is the second thing. You know, lots of people will move here and then the questions are, well, how are the Marshalltown schools? Do I need to, you know, enroll my kids at other schools? What do I need to do? And I proudly boast that my kids are accountable to my town school system and that the world of opportunities that are for them is amazing. So I think, again, with all the families, I can't go out of my house without seeing a family or people come up to me. Especially now with the school year, these are already big guys. Oh, you know, my kids are going to Lenahan, what do you think? Is that going to be a good thing? Are my kids going to go to Miller in the high school? You know, because they know that I'm one of those people that they can come to.
What qualities would you bring to the board that would make the board more effective and accomplishing the mission?
Well, for anybody who knows me for 20 years, at least on the bottom side, the best part of the mission statement to me, what I find that sticks out the most is personalized learning. I have always been an advocate that there are no two people out there that are alike. Yes, we have groups with similarities, but nobody fits into that same channel of learning, you know? So I have always been, that's why I've always been a big, big fan of the universities that I ran in the summertime with the kids. I was, I helped out very much in starting Rogers University way back in the day. I was a whole part of that. Micah volunteered team and all of that. So I really liked how the summer program can help them. And my personal testimony for that was my daughter, Sky, who is now a junior, she really struggled with reading. She went Rogers University for the first two years at the state. That kid now is top of her class and she straight A. She reads all the time. She walked up to me the other day and said, hey, did you have a copy of children? And I was just like, wow, did something right there. So, you know, it's, I live in proof that those programs work and that they're important. And I think part of that, most of that was all through the personalized learning. And I think that is the right step and the district should continue on that path. Plus the asset that I know that this is a four-month term. And I'm still familiar with the policies and all of that type of stuff, so.
What do you believe are some of the strengths of the school district?
I really like cat ready. I like it because it's a two-fold system. It doesn't only cater to the kids who want to go to college, which obviously somehow, I think the world in general has pushed that issue where you have to go to college, you do nothing, and that is so untrue. You know, it also offers internships for kids who want to join the workforce. And as I tell my youth all the time, it doesn't matter if you're college-bound, that's awesome, continue that stat. But if you want to do a trade, that's also just as awesome. Go down, Raul. You know, I did have a few of them, I went to the military. So I think all of those are important. And what, you know, that was awesome this spring, those two young ladies graduating with their AAs and their diploma. And I kind of heard of them, I thought that was awesome. Plus, it gives people, the kids, a chance to really experience a college class. Because, you know, college classes cover a whole lot more freedom than what they're used to in a structured school system. But along with that, it also makes, or they may have more responsibility on their shoulders if they're required to do work. You know, and not that they're not in the school system, you know, it's different when you're paying for college, you're going to college. And so I think that's a great experience and I think the internship is a whole great experience. Another strength I would like to touch on is I think the computer science grant that Lenahan had won. I think that's awesome. Because we're starting the kids at a younger age to get into the techno stuff where they can have a step up, at least with the basics. You know, so by the time those kids get into Miller and the high school, they have a really big future.
We do have a director. What are some of the areas that you think that we should see improvement in the school district?
Communication, communication, communication. You know, and I know that that is no easy task. Trust me, that was a problem when I was on the board. Parents always go, oh, you know, communication. And it just seems to me, and I have laughed, I have laughed and joked about this with friends and people I know. If my child's school account balance is low, I get a text, an email, and a phone call. And so does my wife, like exactly at the same time, I don't know how they attend the programs, but, you know, so that's six between the two parents. If you're a single parent, it's three. It's pretty good for early outs or delayed days, okay? Or if something else happens, I get all of my information from watching you guys, you know, three days later, of course. Or from Andrew's page on Facebook, which I really like Andrew's page, it's much shorter than watching you guys. And, you know, it's really to the point. But for the most part, you know, most parents, most families, they're not going to watch the school board meeting. And I'm not saying that's good or bad. It's their fault, your fault, anybody's fault, because that's the way it is. And so I think just somehow communication in general, and I'm not talking about, you know, a lot of times when people mention communication, they kind of cowardly go, oh, you know, the bad things. I'm not talking about bad things, I'm talking about the good things too. You know, all the things that are happening, the positive, everything, somehow communication has to be worked on. And like I say, I know that is no easy task. I'm sure communication will be talked about 10 years from now, 20 years from now because it seems to be that we lack that somehow as a whole in society.
What would you like us to know about you that you haven't already been able to state?
Well, not a whole lot. I guess I could say that, you know, besides my kids, my wife, I do have a dog and five cats. Who are my actual fuzzy, fuzzy children. But otherwise, you know, I think I stated everything that.
Questions for us?
None.
Okay.
Oh, maybe one.
Okay.
Guys, please stop making that way of a study, please, for three days in a row, that's all I ask. All I ask is all I want. The rest I will work on. Good talking to you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Take a moment to gather your thoughts. And we have some blank paper in front of you. So please vote for the individual that you at this time, without discussion, would think would best fit our board. And to be sure, put your name on your ballot as well. And fold them in half and pass them to the public.
Just rain.
Are you? See if we have a majority yet or if we need to.
We do have a majority.
Okay. Okay. Would you speak louder?
Sorry. We do have a majority of the board voting for to fill the vacancy for the remaining four months of Ross Harris's term with Nico. I'm not going to slaughter today.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being interested in serving on the board. Please remember that there are deadlines that you can follow to run in November as well. So just because we could only take one tonight, doesn't mean that you can't look at us again in November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would make a motion to appoint you, Ross Aguar, to appoint Edgar A, to make a decision.
Sure.
Fletcher Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries. Nico will serve the rest of Ross Harris's term. Are there, Collette will get in touch with him to let him know that he needs to come to the office to be sworn in. Okey-dokey. Any questions from the board, comments?
Did John run it?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
No, no.
Miller Fernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. We are adjourned.